That it's Wednesday, April 29th, 2020, 2:30 PM. And let me read the following. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting lodge, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, 18, in the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southwick Select Board is being conducted both at Town Hall and via remote participation by some or all members. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. Despite our best efforts, if we are not able to provide for real-time access via Zoom conference call platform, we'll post the recording of the meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. All right. We're all set. How do we want to begin?
Well, Laura, is there a particular page that you we should do like the?
Yeah, probably start with the capital.
The capital ones?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody has the capital paper?
Yep.
All right. First thing I have is agricultural Town of Southwick master plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
I guess I'm gonna start with saying no. And if I don't hear anything else, I'm going on to the next line item. Five drawer file cabinet two, select board. No. Assessor vision upgrade to version eight. I would say yes. Conservation Commission.
Excuse me, that one goes under, it says C computer.
Okay, so that's gonna go under the computer line item.
Right. It's already there. It's already there. We'll just get to it again later.
Okay. Conservation drone, no.
No.
Town of Southwick master plan, no. Planning Board master plan new, no. IT computer, Doug, you handle this one.
Uh, well, I think they need to do this. This piece that they're gonna need to continue with the upgrade plan as identified by the IT study and as some of the unfortunately, this COVID-19 has kind of exemplified the need for some more of this equipment in case we have to continue to distance employees or even in the future. And the standard going forward would be to use laptops wherever possible. Plus it'll work in conjunction with the Wi-Fi project that's coming into play. So if we have the money, we should continue to do it. And we also need to finish off the Office 365 licensing as well.
Okay. All right, next item, Town Hall.
Yes.
That's a yes.
Do we have a question or?
No, I was just being nosy.
Okay, okay, nothing wrong with that. Carl, Town Hall, do we need to do the handicap accessible water coolers? Are we ending and under any order to do it next year?
Nope, put that whole section on hold.
You got it. How about the tractor for snow removal? Do we need to consider that or can we go another year?
Another year.
Oh, hang on, on the on the accessibility piece, I hate to be a stick in the mud, but wasn't there a study that we had to do that to for continued eligibility for CDBG money?
Yeah, and that's an $18,000 grant that we got in. Yes, that study is being done by Jim Maisick. And we expect a draft final report in the next two weeks, which is going to have to be included in our final submission for our open space approval.
Did they do the monitor?
It's still going on. But what's gonna come out of that, Doug, will be all the recommendations to do things very much like this that we that we are already listing and doing year to year.
Okay, so this is gonna be, it won't it won't affect us to delay this year.
Not these items, no, the report was the important thing and that's almost done.
Okay, thank you, so then no.
Okay.
Can we, can we go back? Did you do the monitors? Monitor upgrade? Upgrade for 45?
Doug? IT question?
Yeah, I think those were monitors to go with the PC upgrades, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, those got passed approved, that whole section.
That whole section, okay.
And the printer? And the printer?
Yeah, she was on her last leg for that and especially now with all the other stuff she's doing, yeah.
Okay, next section of Town Hall to be determined.
Those are all, those again, the bond reports, the ADA stuff, that's all on hold.
Okay, all right, we're going on to Police Department. Joe?
Yeah. Oh, 'cause I get pulled over the most, this is my problem? All right.
If we don't give them the cruisers, you could get past them.
Yeah, but they, I can't run that quick, they still catch me.
Not in a year from now. I think, Joe, I think you need to look at this because if we fall off the wagon on this, we're gonna put ourselves way behind, it's gonna cost us a fortune later.
All right.
At the very least, I would recommend that we get one marked cruiser.
I thought the two and then skip the third for now, because the third was the unmarked of what I remember, sorry, Joe, sorry to step in here.
No, you're doing fine.
You want marked?
So two.
Can the canine be put off for another year?
I think it could be, I would do the.
One cruiser?
I would do two, but I would, if push comes to shove, ask them what do they want? Right?
Sounds good to me.
If he wants to do one marked and the dog one, that's fine too.
That's up to him.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I don't know what's oldest, what's got miles, you know? I mean, I can reach out, but yeah, I'll give them two.
Two, okay. The other issues?
They seem to be standard every year for whatever that means, right? Affordable radio?
Yeah.
Computer?
E25 compliance?
Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay, so those are normal, those will continue?
Yep, I have a just a thought.
Yep.
In future outlying years, maybe we should start to pull the IT equipment into a singular budget townwide so that they're not trying to do unless it's stuff that they need particular to their stuff, but from a budgetary standpoint, you know, we pulled the the assessor's computer into computer, maybe we should start looking at pulling the the PDFD computer equipment, maybe we'll get better pricing if we buy it all together or and and economies and standardization across the board there, just for next year.
Okay.
Sounds like a good idea. Fire Department, gear dryer and hose nozzles. I think they made a good case for the dryer and obviously for the hose nozzles. Any any problem?
No, not for me.
No, 'cause really that's all they're looking for this year. There isn't, I mean, the truck's on its way, we get that. I don't think there's a big list from them at all, we already started the the other ambulance stuff through the lease.
Yeah, and also next, next thing is the, go ahead.
You know, the Accounting Department had to make sure that the debt service for the trucks, now that the bond issue was done, have all been incorporated into the principal and interest lines in the later part of the budget. So the the investment in the fire department is here, it's just in other parts of the budget.
Correct.
Okay, ALS monitor equipment for A2, he's lowered that down to what, 28,000?
Yes.
Okay, any problems?
No.
Okay. Public safety, I think we can put off floor drains.
Yep, yep, both.
All that stuff?
Yep.
All the things, tie and bond report? Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, emergency management, I don't think we need that. Down to animal control, I think we do need that refrigerator because of the rabies thing, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rabbit, I don't think we.
Stop, leave the dogs out of this.
Yeah, come on, we promised Russ we wouldn't go there today.
I got a little upset yesterday.
I know, you started shaking. Not your tail, it was good.
All right, large shed, we're putting that off?
Yeah.
Lake Management buoys, they can go another year?
Yeah.
All right, next page. Uh, we're still in Lake Management. Lake lot, data logger in security cameras request. The data logger, I think it's gonna be pretty important since we're spending all this money on the alum treatment, but can we reduce the security cameras?
Well, actually, I think if accounting were to look at the current year stuff under capital, don't they have a balance in that security camera line item right now? That they have money for stuff they haven't even bought yet.
We got three people looking.
Yeah. Uh, one looks like he's on vacation, but.
Yeah. A little slower, you gotta get that sunscreen off your hands.
Yeah.
Get to the computer.
Well, I, we have to be careful as well, I when I was observing the Finance Committee meeting the other night too, they fell into the same trap and I found myself doing the same thing. When we're looking at, when we look at these budget items is we're not looking at the the revenue side of it, right? So we're only looking at the expense side of it. So we don't always, sometimes you have to put it in context to your point with this, with the cameras, if they have a surplus in there revolving, same thing going back to the buoys, they, that's a standard deal they do every year and they take that out of launch fees from their revolving.
No, that's a general fund appropriation done on behalf of the Police Department because the chief is the hotter master, that is, that does not come out of those accounts.
Okay, well, thank you, then no on that, but.
And same thing for the cameras.
So then negative, I think that's something we need to look at in the next year as far as, again, something more centralized, because right now there's cameras in different groups and different departments being handled under different, different ways, there's probably some economies to be had there.
What did the Lake Management line item show, you had a date on the camera of line items?
They used $935 already.
And how much do they have left over?
65.
$65? All right, so we just want to double, so you're gonna hold off one year on that then?
That would be my thought, anybody else?
So, yes, I'm told and I'll get scolded tomorrow when I walk down the goddamn hallway, but I've been told, yeah, they replace cameras, 'cause you know they go bad after a while and they get old. And I get that, but you know, mine are six years old and I haven't caught a thief yet. And I do understand that they get old, but yeah, I think you could, the argument is there, you could wait a year, I don't think we hurt too many people, you know what I mean? Everyone should understand that it's just gonna be a little tight this year.
Okay.
Right, and I already talked to Dick about the this pontoon boat motor, that's not as much of a priority as the 5,000 for the dam, the beaver dam issues.
Okay, but that's not under capital or that's under?
It's under operation somewhere else, so these, this capital and then the 10,000 one can both be taken out too.
Okay. So then we're moving down to DPW?
Lake restoration.
Yeah, we missed, we missed 120 grand there.
Okay, well, I I think that unfortunately.
I mean, remember he's doing a lot of emails back and forth and Marky's office trying to secure.
Right, trying to get some federal funds to do that. Okay?
Yeah, we hit our quota this year for the lake, I think, as far as spending.
I I think we've done pretty good.
Yeah, which is good, but I don't, yeah.
All right, then we're going down to DPW Highway?
No.
No?
There are all beaver dams and logs canal broke.
Okay, I thought Carl just said we were taking that somewhere else.
Yeah, you're right, if you look under new operation on the next.
It's a different amount.
That was a bigger priority, that 5,000, because that 5,000 for the area in between the lake in Weir Gates, in this other 10,000 is from the Weir Gates going after the Weir Gates into the Connecticut line.
All right, Mr. Steinhardt, what's, what are you telling me then on this? Are we?
No.
No on this line item?
Right, because we're gonna, we're gonna, under the operations one.
Okay.
5,000 for removal of beaver dams on an emergency, that's the priority.
Okay, then we are going down to DPW Highway. And we have paving projects, construction improvements, and then we have. It's crossed off here.
$3 million.
$3 million, oh, that's what's crossed off there. Okay, well, I would say the 3 million is out, but we'll put in the other standard.
Right, I think we need to come back to that and see what's left to to come back to see, because we've got to keep up that, not maybe we can't keep up the pace we did last year, but we need to look at that, because the roads suck.
Come back, it's not gonna be 3,000, but we'll see what we can come up with, is that what you're saying, Doug?
It's Doug, it's like anything else, if when we go through this budget process exercise with the Accounting Department and we look at the expenditure model and then we look at other year-end funds, we can always do the other thing that you've done before where you've transferred several hundred thousand dollars in year-end monies to do road paving.
Gotcha, but.
Don't forget, the thing that's hurting us this year is you just had to reprogram 140 that you had for Tannery Road and another 170, 90 money because of a set aside to address the Congamon Road disagreement.
And that horrible contractor on Congamon Road.
So just think about how much, how much those dollars right now could have been out there making difference, dealing.
I understood that, but we also carried, we took 2 million last year, there was, and you know, to Randy's plan, there's a lot of projects that need to be done and we, and we're gonna continue to, pun intended, dig a bigger hole, pothole for ourselves, so we just need to come back to this and look at it.
Okay, I think we also got to remember, Doug, that there's several projects that weren't even addressed where the money is sitting there.
Correct, and then it'll get done this year.
There's only so many projects that he's gonna be able to do in this calendar year.
Yep, but hopefully he'll be able to get moving on the ones that rolled from last year now, right? Because here we are, May 1st, plants are open, hopefully contractors are around.
We're hoping. All right, tie and bond, we're skipping out of that, we're going down to DPW Road Machinery. And unless somebody tells me differently, it looks like, I think all those would be on hold.
The only thing I would like to suggest is the that tractor with mower, we have money still sitting there towards that.
Yeah.
So if if we did anything there, I'd like to see that gets finished, because I think the gate, there's 100 and something sitting in for that and we're short 80, and that cleans up their bigger stuff. I would say no to the the big truck, no to the hot box, even though the hot box stuff or paving, you know, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, yeah, you do, you have 88,000 left and between the 142 that you got as an air mock and the 157 that Town Meeting approved last year out of the stabilization account, you still have a balance of dollars that you would then marry with another appropriation here in cash to finish acquiring that unit with all the different attachments they need at DPW.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so does it?
Yes, no, no.
Do we need 80,000, Carl?
Yep.
All right, new trash box, I think that's something we're gonna have to get for solid waste. Cemetery building, I'd say that we're gonna have to put that on hold. Council on Aging, water cooler with bottle filling station.
Yeah, that's just like the other water fillers that were in other parts of the building.
You got it, so on hold?
You could always do that out of your gift account if that had to be done.
Okay, we'll circle it. The new community room, 45,000 out. Going down to library, outside sign project, out. Parking lot repairs and line striping, they could go another year. ADA compliance, we're still putting that list together?
Yep.
Carl?
Yes, sir.
So is that something, it's not immediately needed at this time?
Yeah, it's not, none of the ADA things, it it was one of those things where you know you're gonna get a report.
Okay.
You have a report that's gonna have a a listing of deficiencies for each building, because that's just the, so these dollars were then gonna be sort of like the beginning of addressing issues in those buildings.
Okay.
Putting it all on hold is fine now, because what we could do is see when the report comes out, just like, just like we need to get that report done, that we can eventually get an elevator in this building, so we're gonna be able to use that to help leverage grants too. So we might be able to do a bigger grant package and start to knock off some of these things from other grant sources.
Okay.
So, yeah, put on hold for now.
All right, park and rec, rail trail, we've suggested they go to Community Preservation for restoration money?
Russ, you're jumping ahead, that was just the ADA, what about the library site report, part walkway, AC units from the town bond report stuff for the library?
I thought, I thought you said that we could hold off on that, maybe I missed.
You asked me about the ADA issue.
Okay, I think a lot of that could be held off.
Yep.
Okay. Park and rec, didn't we suggest they take care of that through restoration money?
I believe they had done, I thought maybe in in some of this year's money too, that they might have done an appropriation of dollars and then they were trying to leverage a grant application?
Well, they, last year they put in for that grant and when they came in this year, we told them that this looked to us like a restoration project and they should apply for Community Preservation Funds.
Uh, yeah, that's true, as long as it's not called maintenance.
It isn't maintenance, we clearly told them it was a restoration project.
All right, do you know, did they follow up and speak to the C, the DPC's meeting next week, did they submit something?
They told us they were going to.
Joe, could you follow that up with Jeannie?
Park and rec hasn't met, there was a, they've had a situation over there and then they also haven't met because of other stuff. I did talk to Jeannie and get them set up to be able to meet, and I think they have a scheduled meeting, but it's not until, I wanna say it's April 12th, but don't quote me on it. May 12th.
Joe, can you reach out to them and see?
Yep.
And work with the Mr. Steinhardt to see if there's a way of getting an application in front of the Community Preservation, like we asked them to do at the budget hearing?
Correct, I will reach out, that was for what, the 22,000?
21,000.
21, thank you.
All right, next thing, Channel 15, that that money there for broadband would come out of Channel 15 monies?
That's correct, cable TV receipts.
Okay.
In terms of this, in terms of this year's money, the work that is substantially complete in the building we're sitting in here, and that was over, that was almost 24,000, so the dollars are going to the places where they were intended to and we do now have what's called guest Wi-Fi in this building. So we have substantially made inroads of that issue with our outside state approved contractors, so that is a a non-taxpayer fund source.
Okay, Mr. Mowgli, you remember the rule about chewing gum in school, you gotta give everybody a piece?
If he wants to come over and have some.
Leave it in the driveway.
Is that soup, is that soup or life cereal?
That's my lunch, it's rice.
All right.
I do wanna, I do wanna know for the record that usually Russ brings the pizza, so are we gonna have virtual pizza?
I I was gonna surprise everybody at the end, I have a virtual pizza here that I pass out pizza to everyone at the conclusion.
Is that the the one that you're gonna bite into?
All right, sewer, that's all, comes out of the sewer monies, correct?
Well, I I wanted to speak to that issue, Mr. Chairman. So I was working with the Accounting Department and I had reviewed the the sewer capital account, which is the pro, the Westfield Gas and Electric deal that we have, where they have the the gas line takeoff station that goes into the city. And you know, we we generate so much money from that account, but we've kind of overused it the last two years, so I was really looking at the necessity of maybe just trimming some of that work, maybe deferring the pump station upgrade and the, let's see, deferring that and then also on the PFTI, let's see, the skater upgrades in the grinder pumps, maybe lowering that 55 down to like 40,000 so that we don't run into an issue where we're overusing that as a revenue offset that you vote on during your budget proceedings.
Okay, so your recommendation is the grinder pump maintenance and replacement to lower it up to 40,000?
Well, no, that is already 40, to take both of those items that are 55.
Oh, okay. And the skater, okay.
And and just lower them by 15 and have Randy determine what the.
What's more important?
It look like.
Is that agreeable to everybody else?
Yes, to me.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, water, that's all coming out of water money?
And well, I just want to clear.
We gotta go back to the pump station.
You're okay with deferring the pump station for this year, because Randy is double checking his revenues, but this, this may be a big thing to chew off this year.
Yes.
Infiltration removal?
I think that's gotta be done, because if you don't address that and we have infiltration, then that ends up being short sighted, because we could end up having larger bills from the city of Westfield on water getting into the sewer effluent pipes. So you you really don't want to have water going in, because you you could pay this $10,000 back in one year just by lowering the bill that you're getting from the city of Westfield on the effluent, because if you're getting rainwater going in there.
Good point. All right, on to water. That's all coming out of water earnings?
Yep, and Randy is double checking that he, with Laura, that there'll be sufficient revenues for that large 575 number, because if that were to be done, it would have to be done through a bond issue and we want to make sure there'll be recurring revenue there.
Okay. All right, the next page I have is new positions, do we want to do that now?
Yeah, sure, we should be going along.
Want to wait for Mr. Joe to come back?
Well, okay.
Where did he go?
There he is.
All right, so the next page, do we want to look at new positions? Okay, agricultural, new secretary, $900?
You know, you could always just leave that as a floater assignment, just like you do on a lot of upper boards.
Then why don't we do that? All right, conservation, increase in hours, I'm gonna say no. Going to police, increase in part-time records clerk, I'm gonna say no. Increase in reserve training, we got a lot of new officers, I think we're gonna need them, so we're gonna have to put some money into that.
I think that's actually gonna be net overtime savings if you, if these guys come on board too, because that's gonna take some of the line officers. Because that's going to take some of the line officers off of overtime and you can fill with reserve when they need the shifts.
Can I mention, can I mention what was said during the finance meeting? They took those four positions that the police were talking about. And they said, let's give them $24,000 and they figure out what they need the money the most.
Well. I think that my position would be that I think the reserve officers training. I think Doug's made a good point, that's going to help with the overtime. But I think the other positions can all hold off for a year.
Joe, did you, Joe, did you end up conferring with the chief on these?
I, I did not, I mean, we talked about the reserve stuff and I did not go into detail about those other positions. I didn't think we would be doing them personally, I just thought. That wasn't the time right now with everything going on. But I can reach out, absolutely. Actually, let me take that back, I think I told him he was getting nothing.
I think you told me. Yeah. I think you told me that, Joe.
I did reach out, it was, you're getting nothing. So yeah, I did my part, but I could reach out again if you'd like.
Well, as I said, is there any appetite on the board to recognize the position put forward by the. Finance committee, which is not unsimilar to positions in the past where when a board was trimming. Dollars off proposed budgets, it might allocate a bottom dollar line and just ask. The department head to allocate within the priorities of that granted bottom line dollar.
My, my problem with that, Carl, normally I would agree with that. But I think that we have a very unusual situation we're dealing with. And, and my position is going to be, I don't believe we should be adding additional hours or positions whatsoever. Until we get through this thing. And based on the headlines in the paper this morning. That we could be revisiting this even at worst case scenario in the fall, along with the flu. I'm going to, I would recommend a hard stand.
So, okay, then how about this, so if the, if the FinComs agree to 24, if I understand what accounting is saying. You could put 24 and allocate it to the reserves and then no on everything else.
That would be my recommendation.
Yep.
Doug?
No objection.
Okay.
I still think we have to take, well, we're going to get down to dispatch now and we'll have that discussion, I guess.
All right, dispatch, I'm going to take the same position on that. I don't hear anything else, I'm going on to fire. And this was to give them some additional help because of the ALS billing. Is that going to help with collections, Carl?
No, I think his, his priority. The most about the collections are done through a third-party agency, Comstar. And the billing is done right from the paramedic or EMT, right from their laptop into a wireless computer platform. This is because right now the fire chief and the deputy are spending an inordinate amount of time doing. Payroll and bills payable or, you know, to the extent they can. And then what they can't get done, they're having to have the assistance of the accounting department. Which is then taking away. You know, a number of hours over the course of every two weeks of what they would be doing for other departments. Like the finance committee, myself and yourself. Saying that correctly, Laura?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I think also the chief mentioned that this would also give him additional time to work on additional grants. That might be available, he's been very successful in procuring grants.
So that's true, so, so if there's a. If there's a amount of dollars, did the finance committee speak to this issue?
They referred to you.
They defer, okay, so obviously what the board could do is the board certainly could look at. Some number of hours, I mean, I'm looking at the 15 hours a week here. So you could make, make some effort to assign some dollars here to. The chief some hours.
If you used a $15 rate. It would be, we need to add 8,000. A little over $8,000 to the existing budget, so it would be 11,000 and something.
What's the existing floater rate?
15, but how much is in that budget, that thing right now, there's $3,600 in there. So I guess Laura's saying is that there's, you know, you, you could, you could choose a smaller number. And then get to a position where you would have. You know, maybe enough hours a week, it's 15 hours a week, that's. Because let me ask, how many, how many hours does it take them usually to do their, their payroll in a given week and their payables at a given week?
Can I interrupt you for a minute? Is there anyone else in accounting up there other than you guys?
The three of us, no, just the three of us.
A package has been delivered to the back door for accounting, can someone go grab it?
I, I can have that done, hey, Jeannie?
It has to go to accounting, it's melting.
Can you go to the back door of town hall? That's got to go to the accounting department, okay? Thank you, yep, someone's going to get that.
It's not pizza, but it'll work.
I'm going to look out my window, Joe.
Wait a minute, my dog isn't barking.
Sorry about that.
You know, who needs pizza when you?
All right, would you make a recommendation on a dollar amount, Mr. Steinhardt?
Well, I'm envisioning that. You know, see if they needed to, using 15, the rate, the increase. So Laura, this says if you had a $15 thing for an additional.
8,000.
So what if we. What if we went to, what if we went to, instead of 15 hours a week. Went to like 10 hours a week at the 15. As an interim measure, what would that come out to?
It would be a total of $7,500. So we would have to increase the budget.
Oh, like another 4 to 5,000?
Awesome, yep.
So what do you, what do you think, gentlemen, of 5,000 more?
Sounds good.
I think this brings this whole discussion full circle.
Yeah.
All right, Joe. Somebody wants something. What do we got?
A chocolate chip and orange pineapple.
Well, I probably don't want to mix those then.
Okay, so. Going back to your earlier point of going full circle, are you talking about. Position there or evaluating what clerical support? Is that what you mean by that?
I'm sorry, Carl, could you repeat that last sentence, it kind of skipped out.
Well, you had mentioned about going full circle, did you mean that in the context of. You know, revisiting the clerical structuring of support for the department?
Yeah, I mean, we went, there was a position there, then it was eliminated through the budgetary process. And then, and now there's a request to, to put something back there. So maybe, maybe the right decision was, you know, that there needed to be a, a reduction there. But that, to free up the chief's time to be able to be productive around grant writing and grant, getting grants. I think you'll see the payback in excess of this 10 grand. Much like, you know, we're advocating to spend the $27,000 in reserve training and that's going to offset expense elsewhere. This spending $10,000 here for some clerical support to free up the chief and the deputy chief. To be productive around getting grants and training and so on and so forth for this fire department. Is going to yield benefits in excess of the $10,000.
All right, so what number you want to, you want to approve, the 10, 6, 4, 5?
Well, I'm right around, I mean, Laura's at eight, it's somewhere around 10 grand. I mean, I don't, I don't know if we need to kibbitz over 500 bucks at this point, but it's, it's somewhere right around, you know, 10 grand.
It's.
10 grand?
Russ, what's your preference?
10 grand. Joe?
You don't want to know my preference, we'll just go with you guys.
All right, 10 grand.
Uh, Doug.
Is that in total?
10 total.
Okay.
Point of order, you had mentioned 27 on the reserve, the number we put on was 24, are you, are you proposing to amend?
I'm, I'm leaving that alone, I think we'll end up coming back to it at the end of our discussion here for all, when, when we get the. When we understand what the budget looks like at that point, we're going to have to come back and reanalyze all this stuff, so.
That's fine, we can do that when we have our joint meeting with the FinCom.
But I think, yeah, right.
Okay, because it's going to take a while to get there.
Of course.
Laura, we all set with everything else now, we can go down to EMS?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, EMS, no problem?
No.
Okay, cemetery, they're working with community preservation?
I did see that they were going to file with, they were going to file the application. Ronnie Conley was trying to submit stuff to Chris.
Okay.
Said no under this format, because it's a CPC.
Right.
Right, so we don't carry it here.
It's going to say no U C P C in parentheses, okay.
The pay increase to 15, that's for the people that work down there?
Yeah, and that would be commensurate with the same issue for Wally Park. Joe, I believe you had reviewed this issue, this dollar issue for both entities.
I'm sorry, I heard none of that.
Cemetery. Equipment operators out there, groundskeepers.
Yep.
They would end up getting the same rate of pay as the park and rec people.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're good with that?
Not thrilled about it, I wish the park and rec wasn't that high, but yeah, I think you gotta. You gotta do it, those guys are doing a great job over there.
Okay.
And I think they also made the case that they were also doing repair, engine repairs.
They're doing a ton of extra work.
On the equipment. So it's probably saving us substantial money. So no problems with that, we're going down to park and rec. Program pay increase. I, I would say no to that. And then the lifeguard salary increase, I, I don't think we have any choice but to go up on it.
Well, they're going to have a carry, it's hard to say yet, but depending on what's what, we may, they may end up carrying money out of, out of this budget year if the beach doesn't open.
Well, not only that, Doug, this, this 1275 just starts out for this summer. You're up to 1350 if I read my Massachusetts rate as, as of January 1st, is that correct, Laura?
Yes.
So even if you weren't going all the way to 15, you'd still have to do a number, there might be a couple of weeks worth. Next June, a year from this June, at the end of the fiscal year 21 budget. With the higher state minimum wage.
Yep.
So what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Well. Like I said, I, I would recommend that the coordinator stay the same and the lifeguard be increased.
Okay.
All right, next page, new operation requests. Agricultural, they're going to apply for community preservation funds for the signs? Is that correct?
Yes.
They were told to do that.
Okay. Consultant fees for open space and do we, do we really need that? I mean, don't we have, we already have a conservation and we have an open space plan that's going to be approved by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We also have park and rec, we have a community preservation committee. Okay, so I'm going to suggest no. And office supplies and materials of $1,000, that seems a little high for that committee. Do we have anything for supplies in that account now?
They don't have a budget, so their, their, their argument to the FC was that they're actually creating their first budget this year.
Okay. What do we give for, usually for office supplies and materials for some of the other committees? Isn't like just a few hundred dollars?
Yes.
Recommendation, Mr. Steinhardt?
I, I would want to hear from Laura and Mel and Carol just on a, on a number. I'm sure, I'm sure it's going to be somewhere between the 300 to 500 range.
Okay. All right, going on to conservation. Cell phone travel expense with 5% increase, I would say no.
I mean, they're, they're going to have those wetland protection fees that they could pull that out of. Because you're, you're going to town meeting and you are going to have the revolving account, which was actually called for when the wetland. Fees bylaw was approved a number of years ago. It also did call for establishment of that revolving account, so that is going to happen.
Okay.
This would be an eligible expense out of that. Isn't that where it's coming out of now, Laura?
It's coming out of the wetland, the conservation wetland fees, yep.
Yeah, so you're just going to be putting more money into that with this other, with that other bylaw coming, or that revolving.
All right, computer, Doug, you're in charge.
I'd prefer to have Laura speak to that topic.
This is, this is something, this is something that Laura and I have worked out.
Okay.
The estimate to do it correctly is going to be 25, but you, we've already been, she already had 10,944 in the budget. So this other new net money of 14,056 is the delta to make the $25,000 number happen, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's what that speaks to and that is something that we need to do to, again, support the efforts of our police and fire. So that we're not having Paul Miles do more than he should be doing and getting him out in a cruiser more often. And then this is also going to be helpful to Jim so that he doesn't have to carry the whole burden on himself as one person. When we have all these other resources and skill sets that are available. And this was recommended under the Mass IT offices recommendations in their final report to the town.
Okay.
So that's pretty straightforward and that should be a yes.
Okay. Building sealer supplies, $50?
And I think, as you can see. No new money would be needed, it would just be real allocated from his outreach program that he does with the contractors, so. Laura can create a line item, move the money to it, and then this is just a zero because there's no new net cost.
Okay, and that's the same with the uniform allowance, okay.
Is that, am I right, Laura, or is that just?
No, the sealer would be an extra $50.
Okay, so that'll be a yes on that and then the other zero below because that's a real.
You're right.
Okay. All right, now we're on to the canal, brook, beaver dam and log removal.
And that, that to me is a yes.
Okay, 5,000.
Yep.
Going down to DPW engineering.
Okay, this whole thing is your 100,000. Or actually 77,000 because this is, this is operations. Because the other amount of money was going to the coordinator, who's John Goddard. And so this is the other 77 that's used by that department. Was there a discussion on this at the finance committee?
They approved adding the lines, but they wanted to table the amounts until they met with you guys.
So does the board want to do anything on its position or does it want to table this too?
I don't, I think we need to continue, I'm sorry, Russ. I mean, I, I thought I had heard during the finance committee meeting, I'll have to go back and review it. Because I, they kind of had pushed the entire. um compliance activity around the outflows and and our um permit for a year. Um, I don't think that would be a prudent move at this point since we already vested in it last year. We should probably continue on the path we're taking. But uh
You also brought a person on to do the work.
Understood, but what I, the key here is, last year was 100 grand and this year they're reprogramming that money into different line items, so. Right. Correct. So that in context, I think it's okay to proceed how it is. Um, and they need to do that to maintain compliance with the with the permit which we already were a year late for, was at the MS4, right?
Right, but everything was delayed a year. We're in the middle of um some issues being worked out between EPA and D E P and other entities.
Right.
But they do need to have money in that budget and they knew to, they do need to be doing stuff. The only question is, is whether or not Randy could identify within those operational line items for part of the upcoming year?
I know, speaking to uh you know, we had our little conference there a year ago and they said that they would work with us, and I think since this is an unfunded mandate that and due to the circumstances that we're all facing, I think it would make sense that we reduce this by a certain dollar amount. Still maintain our person where we continue to do some work. But I don't think anybody can expect us to continue to do all the work uh due to the COVID-19 situation. So that would be my suggestion that it be reduced. I'll throw out between 40 and 50,000.
Do we know what's left in that account today? Or that line item?
Well, that's like a whole department.
Oh.
So currently left in that department is 72,000. You want me to go line by line?
No.
Net out, net out the person, Mel. And then so how much is there right now? Like, say right now, we're into April, so when added last, um what, August or September, Joe? Is that about right?
Yeah.
So how much is in there? You know, minus the salary person.
Minus the salary.
Right now, how much is in there right now, both encumbered and unencumbered balances?
So 72,000.
Oh, there's 72,000 besides the employee.
Yes.
He's needed to to carry that person through June 30th. The 72,000 unprogrammed and unencumbered in a, well, out of the operations part for the for the last three or four months after the, three months out of the year.
Yeah, I think they've
Actually two months.
Certainly support reducing the amount for this coming fiscal year.
So what they don't use, that goes back into the general fund?
Yeah, it would close out. It would close out to the general fund to free cash. Unless you did a, unless you use some of these funds for your year-end municipal monetization transfer and you use anything alone.
No, I'm just wondering because I mean, if they were depleted funds already, then I would say, okay, they're doing a lot. I don't mean it that way either. I know a lot of this is is paperwork and technical, but it's, yeah, I mean, I I agree, Russ. We should be able to drop that down some numbers.
Can I?
Too much of a place.
Something a little bit.
You're echoing like there's no tomorrow. Sorry.
I know, I know. Can you turn this down, Carol?
Where's the, where's the thing?
Where's the thing?
So out of the stormwater permit line item.
Yep.
That's the one that he wants to take which the original creation was 77,200. He wants to take that line item and make it into these various others.
Right.
What's left in that account is 65,580.
Okay. So you got 65, 65 is unused right as of today, which is um almost May 1st. After 10 months, 65 out of the 100,000 is unused.
Right.
The other person came on in around labored, so that was two months into the year. So he's been on board for eight months. So the question is, is do you, do you as the board set a number? Or do we want to just ask Randy what we could prorate the year with by an adjustment from that 77?
The only problem with that, Carl, is Randy, God bless him, he's an engineer, and he he looks at this by the letter of the agreement that we have to get all this done. I'm just going by what the people told me that they would work with us. I think these are unusual circumstances we're facing. So I think we should just give Randy a dollar amount and that's it. A reduced dollar amount.
Okay, so uh Mel, what's in the, what's the, what's in the budget for fiscal year um 21 for the personnel part of it?
It's for the personnel part, is there 25,000?
How much, 25?
Yep.
Okay, so 25, so how do we get to 77,200? If it's only 100, if isn't it all supposed to still balance out to 100? So if you got 25 there and then you got 77 here, that's 102,200. Is that what that's adding up to?
I'm coming up with 88,800.
You have the entire budget for the
Yep, they were actually under.
Yep. So you don't have us at 100,000 this year?
No.
Are you talking about the original appropriation for the entire engineering department?
Are you talking 20 or 21?
Uh, 20, because I want to see see what what's in there for 21. After I look at the 20.
So. So 20 is 104, right, Mel?
Yes.
It's roughly 104 for 65. Is that by 20's current budget?
Oh, that's that's because um this thing had other it, when it was added in, the other line items uh were pre-existing before stormwater and they were software, data studies and all that. So 20,000 is what was put aside for the person. So how much is put aside for the person for fiscal year 21, 25?
25.
Okay, so that went up by 5,000. And then so, but I'm still looking at that as a as 100 total, so that leaves the other so that 25 plus the other amount for stormwater permits. Um, and I can see how they want to re-break that down now. Data plan, software map. So the question is, is out of that 25, out of that 77,200, you only used 11,610 encumbered 2,400 and you got 63,000 unencumbered right now. Two months to go, so there's no way you're going to spend $63,000 in eight weeks. So the question is, is going forward next year is how much, even if you reallocate some of these line items, whatever dollar amount you you put it down to, Randy will take the 77,200 and he'll reallocate it. Or he'll take whatever you give him and he'll reallocate it to the line items. So what number are you thinking about um, Russ?
Well, since you said he's got 65,000 left and only two months to go.
63,111, yeah.
Okay, then I I'm comfortable between 40 and 50,000.
50.
50, we got 50, okay. Moving on. Counsel and agent.
So 20, so what you're saying is 27, 27,200 is available to program for all those other items.
There you go.
Does that answer the question, Laura?
No. No, I'm confused.
Well, you had, you had 77,200.
Who's on first?
You had 77,200 being being structured to all these line items, right?
Right.
And if the board just said don't, if the board said hold back on 50 of it, that leaves 50 from 77,200 equals 27,200. Right?
You're giving him 50,000?
No. Russ, did you did you give him 50 or reduce it by 50?
We're reducing it.
By 50?
Right.
Okay, then that that comes out to 27,200.
Okay, 5,000 of that is going to go towards the salary.
But no, because we're not touching, this salary isn't there. You you've already got salary in a top line item. We're looking at the operations. This is an operations page.
So the new operations lines total $53,000. Of that $53,000, how much do you want to give them to allocate?
Out of the 63?
There's
You got 63, not 53. Your your report here as of this week says 63,117 is available unencumbered.
No, I'm not what they're asking for in FY '21.
Right, which is still only operational money.
Operational money, the 10,000, the 24,000, the 9,000, the 65,000.
So what what the board is saying is none of this has to do with the person in the 25 above.
Yes, it does.
In your budget.
Because 5,000 of that 5,000 of that was to be allocated to the salary line item.
It doesn't say that here.
I know it doesn't. But trust me. It does say that on the large budget sheets that we have, these ones here.
Okay, so then what we'll do is is we'll we'll still keep this at still keep this at 27,200 and still keep the other five that went to the other thing above.
Okay.
So you're changing that line from $53,000 to 20, what?
Yeah, I don't know why, it should have just said 53 to begin with or 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 58. So. All right, so 27,200 is the number that you're committing to for operations. And the other dollars will still stay for 25 up top for the the technician. I believe some of that was for summer help because I'm I'm seeing it's stormwater technician in S U, which I believe is summer help.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. We're moving on.
Are we done with that accounting?
I think so. I'm good.
I think that horse is dead.
Well, we didn't get any ice cream, so I guess we're eating the horse.
That's well.
Yeah, only the accounting department got taken care of.
There's an extra one in there, Mr. Steinhardt, if you behave. That's a way of counting to let you know about that.
Russ, I'm going to go check the driveway again. Yeah, same.
Now, my dog isn't barking, yeah.
By the way, Doug, if the horse is dead, you know, with the meat shortage, that could become, you know, a form of hamburg.
There is a meat shortage. I was at my wholesalers today and there's no chicken anywhere.
Wow.
Crazy.
Well, the good news is there's plenty of people in town that have chickens.
Yeah, and goats.
At least temporarily right now.
All right, we're going on to uh council on aging. There's a zero there, so I'm going to go
Right, because you know, that that was a, when they bought the unit, it comes with an agreement for a couple of years, so then when when those we roll them under our contracts and agreements for coffee, so that's
All right. Park and rec. Wally Park Lawn Care and Wally Park Electric.
Yeah, those have been care of out of their revolving accounts.
Okay.
Uh, let me look at their revolving accounts that we got. And the last time I looked at it, uh the program income for 2019 was 50,380. And let's see, as of March 5th, according to our accounting department, um they have um 38,443 in the Wally Park account, 2,600 in the Rails Trails, 12,600 in their other revolving account, and gifts of 43,85. So these four accounts, Laura, as of these numbers still fairly good? You're still fairly comfortable?
Fairly good, there's not been a lot.
Okay, so there's been minor expenditures out of them. And this, of course, is recognizing that no other revenues have gone in there either, so. Um, so that's what the accounts look like, gentlemen.
All right. And we're going down to channel 15. And that 15 is coming out of the channel 15 fund, right?
Yes, yep.
Yep.
All right.
What does that do? What does activities do?
Activities, this is if we have to do more issues related to COVID with another outbreak in the fall, Joe. And it's to make sure if we need to support all board secretaries in departments with additional um capabilities for remote meetings for some of their members, even if you go back to a having people in the building, there's going to be a certain number of people that are never coming back to the building. They're always going to be only involved in the municipal government in a remote fashion. And you're going to have to have the capability to deal with things if you have another outbreak. If you end up using all of the money, it's just going to revert back to the chapter 5, the channel 15 retained earnings.
So is it payroll services or is it?
This could be, it could be equipment, it could be um it could be hiring vendors to help help these, help our boards do this, because at the end of the day, Mr. Moglen is going to be going to work at some point and he's not going to be available to be doing these things. This is going to help support the board secretaries and board chairman, and if they need to have some sort of service arrangements with people, it'll accommodate that too, but this is the way we need to think going forward to support these people because we cannot have the time of one individual selectman who at this point has been the designated survivor chewed up for too much longer.
Understood. I just didn't want to go into one particular person all for payroll.
Oh, no.
No, 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 I get it. No, 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 no.
Nope.
Thank you.
Nope, this is tools.
Tools, tools in the toolbox.
Or I volunteer citizens to be, interact with each other.
Thank you.
And Joe, this will also partially be some of the equipment that would be needed to beam meetings from the land use room and the selectmen's room direct to channel 15.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought it was for. Yep, perfect.
But we may, we may leverage some of this money for, let's say this drags on much longer. We just paid the bill today for the second month of Zoom. If we go one more month, it would make sense to buy the year and just be done with it, and that's like, you know, 2,500 bucks.
Exactly, and that's
Okay.
Pretty good money, Joe, so we need to have this as a tool. And and your other chap, channel 15, I keep wanting to call it chapter, but your other channel 15, other money, capital money is also going to continue the outfitting of the building. And that goes toward the selectmen's policy directive that people should be recording their meetings and at some point we should be broadcasting them. So it's all consistent with those policy decisions.
And we're very fortunate that of all the work that Mr. Moglen does. And I know he works for ice cream, you know, so.
It's probably better I don't have the ice cream at this point. So they talk about the You know, they talk about the freshman twenty when you go to school, I think I've caught the COVID twenty.
Oh, I thought we were talking about lactose intolerance.
I was gonna leave that for a different day and, but yeah, that's, that too, okay, carrying on.
Carrying on, I am now on to the general budget. Starting with moderator salary, is everybody on that page?
I think what we could do, the way the moderator does it is you could just do it page by page and ask anybody if they have a.
That's a great idea.
That's the way Mr. Putnam facilitates meetings.
All right, I'm gonna give everybody a chance to peruse it.
I mean, I think, you know, on the red thing, we already took care of that filing cabinet, we'll just, we'll do that another way if we have to, so.
Okay, anything on the first page? Joe, Joe, question?
Yeah, hey, go ahead, caller number seven, you're up, yes.
Uh, town two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary celebration, we already have a balance in the Southwick Civic Fund?
Yep, yep, there's some monies, yeah.
We would probably have enough with this five thousand if we did at least the parade this year. If there was a parade this year.
Well, we, don't forget, we have other town money in another, in other line items from earlier appropriations, so I don't know what, we could certainly find out what encumbered balances on that.
I think the five thousand is fine, if we do a parade, it's gonna be a small parade. It's gonna be what the envision of a lot of people might have when we started this program.
Right.
At the end of the day, yes, is there enough money to do something for this town? Absolutely.
Okay.
But not, you know, the seventy-five thousand just for the parade, you know, those days are gone.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or concerns on page one? Going to page two.
Did the finance committee attack any of this, or are we gonna wait and look at numbers or level funding or anything of those natures? Um, what was the thought process behind that? I thought, I bowed out of the finance committee meeting due to a.
We have another meeting scheduled on Monday where we will pick up on the capital budget items and then go through the general fund.
Did they get to the general fund?
Budget.
No.
Wow, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, going to page three.
Um, you did do a transfers for FinCom Reserve for issues relating to elections and town meetings. And you did have that document that also stated uh, would also be maybe additional election operation type expenses. So I don't know if you want to, um, we can go back and visit that with the finance committee when they've had a chance to read that letter regarding elections and registrations and town meetings.
Were you carrying that, Carl?
We're not, excuse me, Doug?
Where is that on the sheet?
It's not on the sheet, because it just, it came in, but it came in after the sheet was given to us.
What was the amount again, Carl, fourteen or fifteen?
Uh, hold on, well, no, the, the amount you just did to finish the year for two elections and a town meeting was fourteen.
Okay.
The amount, um.
I think it was like a twenty thousand increase or something like that?
What is this?
Well, it could, it could go as high as thirty-seven, but I think everybody needs to read what was sent to the finance committee members and to our office because of the, um, issues relating to, um, getting ready for the elections, essentially a month's worth of early voting, because you're gonna have two weeks for each, for both the primary and the presidential election. And so you had some money there, and then you had some money for officers printing ballots. Uh, poll workers went up. And then supplies went up, so you have this, this document, so.
Right, but my point is, those haven't been programmed into this, I mean, we've had these documents for two weeks, so they're not, they're not in these documents, those dollar amounts. So we probably should flow them into the document, right, if, if.
Yeah. So, and I don't know if, did, did, did any of this get discussed Monday night, Mel or Laura, with the, with the, with the correspondence that came in from the clerk's office?
They, um, they did a brief overview that they needed to look at the, you know, increasing some of the cost for the elections, but they didn't go into any discussion about it.
So I think what we ought to do, gentlemen, on that, is just put, just put in our own columns, the blue column, that, just some TBDs under those parts of it that, that relate to these requests, and then we'll just hold off on that and just move on to the next page.
All right.
How's that?
I think we're pretty sure that there's gonna be an increase in.
There'll be some, but we just need, it, it needs to be agreed to and clarified, and we may need to have the department head speak to some of those issues, so. So there's a couple of TBDs on page three.
Okay.
Okay. So that addresses Doug's concern about building in or not having built it in yet, so that's, then we go on to page four.
Page four.
Because, you know, a lot of these, you don't really need to be looking at the ones you have in red, because you've already made all those decisions with the accounting department. You just need to look at the ones that are in black. Would that, would that be correct, um, Laura?
Yes.
Okay.
But page four is where the election things are on, Carl, right?
They're on four, yeah, three and four.
Okay, so we got a.
TBD on some of that stuff, too.
Okay. All right, we're going on to page five.
Can we go back to
What?
Three for a second?
Back to three.
Sorry, under the legal ads? Wasn't there discussion from Michelle, we did a reserve fund transfer, that the cost of those are going way up, and we're not carrying enough money, we already did one reserve transfer in this current year, and we're setting ourselves up to do it again in twenty-one, right?
Um, I don't think it was from her, I think you might have heard that at a earlier finance committee meeting, when they were acting on transfer requests.
Correct.
So, yeah.
Just putting that out there, so that's the last line on there on fifty-two, one-hundred.
You know, it's, you look at eighteen expended, it was pretty high, nineteen wasn't too bad, but this year, you know.
You had, you had an outsized number due to the, uh, the issue on College Highway there, north. That you had a, a lot of legal ads, and I don't know if that's gonna be a.
Oh, we just, Doug, we just did one for the fire station project, too, so.
Well, you know, one that we had to advertise like four hundred ads, right, because
Yeah.
each property was a separate thing.
Well, you know, what you could do is, i- i- if you're already up to eleven-five this year, based upon transfers having already been made, you could move the eighty-five-hundred number up to some other number in between that and the eleven-five.
Let's make it ten.
Ten, it's.
And we also had that, that housing deal too that we had to advertise for, right? On the other side of town, that went into some kind of bankruptcy, was there a ton of legal ads with that whole mess?
Uh, yeah, there's some of that, but a lot of that is done under your tax title, too.
Good, good, okay.
You know.
That's fine.
I mean, at the end of the day, we do recover all the monies.
All right.
Okay.
We're moving that to ten.
All right.
We're going back to page five.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No.
All right, well, we already whacked the drone in the master plan. By the way, if we keep waiting on this drone, they're gonna be practically free in about two years. The prices are coming down and down and down.
Why don't we just wait a year and buy Fred Gore's used one, and every year he gets a new one?
I believe I have two upstairs that are for some child under five.
Yeah, that's, that's not it.
Well, I bet you it'd be pretty close by the time we're done.
All right, any questions on five? If not, we're going to six.
Um, okay. Uh, Laura, how are we doing on the, um, the part-time salaries? I know we did have to make an adjustment on that, because obviously, the board needs to know, you, you've added on several ad hoc boards, you've had people backfilling people, you've got retirements coming up, so I just want to, you know, you'll, you'll see that the, um, part-time thing, plus you're also cleaning up Wally Park. So, uh, we, we did need to make adjustments in that line item, plus any increases that are in wage rates, too, so. I just want you to be aware and be cognizant of that, there's a lot of variables that go into that in terms of, you know, what you, what schools call substitute teachers, we call substitute clerks, which are called floaters. And then we have all these ad hoc boards, like the, the board Doug is involved with, and then we've been helping out the, um, you know, ad commission and other boards that don't generally have a, an entity assigned to them. Um, and then, you know, we, we, we need that for us, so.
Is that where our floaters come from, from our selectmen's office?
Yes, yes.
Yep, and, and that, as well as your, uh, that's, that circulate over to fire, that go over to other offices to backfill and building.
Yeah.
With people on here, and, and it also handles all your part-time custodials.
Yep, I think we gotta look at our selectmen's office this year, and I just don't under, I get, I get floaters, trust me, I get it. But I just, I, I, it blows my mind how we have two secretaries and we still can't seem to get our shit done. And we have floaters, and I get floaters when people are upset, I get that, I understand that, but I, I just blows my mind, technology's only gotten better, yet it appears that we've gotten slower. Um, and I don't know, I'm just venting, because this is my time to bitch, but we gotta look at this, because this is just, I, I.
Part of that, we, we were backfilling FMLA and also.
I get it.
Up in our office.
I get it, but it just, sometimes I just, I, I don't get it, you know, I don't, do we still need two secretaries in there in floaters, or do we need? I don't know what we need, I think we gotta look at that. How many, I mean, and you only have a few years left anyways, Carl. So do we modernize that whole, and just re, I know, hey, I can say it.
We only technically have one and a half people, because a certain portion of other people's time is, is cost allocated to the water division under part-time, and the sewer, and committee.
I, this isn't the place to argue that point, so I'm not going to, but I'd love to. All right, I'll see you at sundown, opening our holsters. Meet at the high part of the mountain.
So, Mr. Steinhardt, are you suggesting we need an increase in one of these line items?
Uh, no, if, if, I, I would, um, take my recommendation from Laura and Mel if we think we do, and if not, then we'll leave it alone.
I was gonna say, this year we budgeted currently a hundred and sixteen thousand, we've used a hundred and seven, so I raised it up to the hundred and twenty-three to encumber some of the higher usage and, and the, um, two percent increase.
Yeah, I mean, Joe, you, you gotta realize, you know, we create ad hoc, you end up, like, the secretary, Doug needs a secretary out of the board. We, we, you know, that'll cost us a few thousand bucks in the course of a year, that's what happens when you create boards, you know.
I get that, I do.
Oh, we have to go to somewhere in the budget and find a place, make sure that we put these people in place so that we give support to our volunteers and our citizen boards that are studying different issues. As well as the fact that we also, again, have to use some of that money for custodials to go up and clean Wally Park.
Oh, so I just think the select board, I just think the select board has too much support at times, that's all. Maybe me and Russ can start doing more secretarial duty since we'll be out of business here shortly.
What I'm saying to you, Joe, is if we're gonna bother go look at that, we're gonna, we're gonna look at all of these other areas.
Yeah, well, it starts at our goddamn office, Mark.
All right, I think we got another dead horse, so we're gonna move on.
Jesus Christ, we got a lot of meat.
All right, we're on Town Hall Operations, page seven.
Okay, well, I think we already took care of all the capital-related issues.
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing a lot of red on this page.
Yeah.
All right, page eight.
Yep.
Where's the police?
I just want to make a notation on page eight, that the police chief, there was a, um, I need to correct that to be a hundred and nine thousand and forty-one dollars.
Under salary?
Under the salary.
But that, that's, is that his last contract?
I think, yeah.
Right, Joe, his last year?
Yeah, maybe we can reach out and see if he wants to take four thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars off, and then he could get his goddamn stimulus check. But I'll, I'll check with him, maybe, you know, I don't.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were gonna ask him to just re-up for another three.
Oh, no, he can go, he's home at home anyways, he's home. This is getting crazy. Anyways.
Another dead horse, let's move on. Uh, page nine.
You agree to the shotgun and the rifle, correct?
Yes.
Yep. You want us to put him in your comm, Mel?
Yeah.
We may need them after this meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, one of my neighbors might fall crazy.
Although I don't, I don't know, up there in Tallinn, there's a lot of things out there in the woods.
All right, going on to page ten.
Yep.
And we agreed to the dryer and the nozzles?
Correct.
Okay. Page eleven. Uh, building department inspector salary. Does that need to be that high, Carl?
Uh, our range, um, Mr. Chairman, was the sixty-two to sixty-nine, and I am gonna be negotiating something with the individual, and they are in the higher end of both the qualifications of a commissioner level, the length, the number of years.
All right.
And we are taking them away from places that pay a higher amount of health insurance.
All righty.
Start at low, Carl, start at low, can always go higher, there's stairs, there's steps, you go up them, gotta start at the bottom.
Understood.
All right, thank you. Need any help, you let me know, I'm on a roll today.
Tell me how you work out with Chief Bishop first on that.
Not a problem.
All right, we're going on to page twelve.
Go back to eleven, on the E permitting, is there any ongoing expense to E permitting that we're not carrying?
I believe there is, and.
Oh, that's capital, I see, sorry.
But Laura, isn't some of the, also under some of the E permitting?
That's probably under computer.
Expenses are under computer.
Yeah, sorry about that, my bad.
Well, you're probably, all that ice cream you had, it's confusing you, Doug.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, we agreed to the refrigerator, but got rid of the shed. We got rid of that.
All the other stuff above are zeros.
Okay. Page 13.
Will the weed control go down now that we've done the the deal over there, or will it just not be used and then it'll just go back into the general fund?
Well, let's not confuse it. That weed control is for the Eurasian milfoil and the other types of weeds. That's not for the algae blooms.
Gotcha.
I, I would wanna revisit that in a year and see how that works out. But it could be, it could be part of that discussion, sir.
Could we reach out to Dr. Muller on that one? Get his thoughts?
Yep.
That's our third, correct?
Third what?
Well, I mean, we put in a third, Southfield puts in a third, and CRC.
Well, they, they do want certain, certain tasks, it's equal one-thirds. There are certain things CRC does not participate in.
Okay.
Some things are 50/50, and some things are one-third, one-third, one-third.
Okay. All right, we're going on to page 14. And we said we would revisit that 3 million item at a later day.
Could we just plug a million into that number for now? And make, leave it red or something so we know it's not gonna stay, but just to, as you do your numbers, at least you'll see where you're at, or we probably would bond for that anyways. Because you gotta look at Canary Road and say, how can you put that off another year or two?
Well, you had the money for that, you ended up.
I know, I know, I know, the gypsies came and they robbed me, I get it. But that's beside it. Now, we're back to reality. So I don't know if you wanna put, I just think you should put something there, if we're gonna really visit it, I get it. But, you know, let's, let's be realistic, we're gonna have to do something to a few of the roads. I'm not saying 3 million.
Oh, yeah, you've got an issue on Hillside, you've got a big issue on Hillside at the border, too.
Yeah, so we, you just
There's several roads that are broken.
There is, there is.
The, the good news is, there seems to be, there's gonna be a push on the federal level on infrastructure. Uh, being an election year, I think there's a good chance something's gonna pass.
You got a fever, Russ? You okay? You all right?
Look, the way they're spending money, they're gonna pass them.
Joe, he didn't get any ice cream, so he's running a little high, too.
Yeah, he's running something.
All right, with that, we're going to 15.
I think we're gonna have to come back to that. I said it earlier, we're still gonna have to come back to it at the end. And we see what this budget looks like.
Agreed.
All right, so he's gonna get his tractor.
Yep.
But the other stuff is gone.
Yep.
And we reduce the, uh, stormwater.
Down to 27.7 for those red ones.
All right, page 16. And we agreed to the trash box?
Yep.
And under cemetery, I believe they were gonna take that to CPC.
Do you think we're okay with that?
That's the 2,500, Doug.
Yes, that's correct. The $2,500 are gonna go to CPC under historical for that.
But the increase to 15, we approved.
Yes.
Okay.
You think our trash fees are okay?
Well, that's, that's gonna come up again later. We already said we were gonna, I thought we put a three-year plan in place last year.
Yeah, 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 I think we're okay for two, yeah. Yep.
Well, no, you, you, you didn't, you didn't make the decision for the stickers yet. He's waiting for you to make a decision to go up on the fees. So even though you made, even though you discussed it last year and said you're gonna do a multi-year increase, you only acted on one of them.
All right, can you put it on the agenda?
Agenda for next Tuesday, yeah. Because that's something we had already, I think we had committed to a three-year plan. If we need to just continue along where we were going, we should do that.
Absolutely.
And I wanna make a comment on the improvement line. They're asking for level funded. And normally this money, or the revenue to pay for this line comes out of their sale of lots. And currently, there's only 6, $6,200 in that line.
Well, I guarantee you that's gonna go up. Unfortunately.
So it's, just know if
Which line item?
Taxpayers versus other years where it's come out of the sale of lots.
Yeah. Laura, which line item, repairs and maintenance one?
No, the improvement.
Improvement.
Oh, okay.
The last line, that's 16,100.
Yep. Well, that's for what, survey work, layout stuff? Uh, and other work they have to do on their, um,
Well, we agreed to a three-year plan on that, Carl.
That's right, yeah, this is year two. This is year two for, for that three-year plan. And since you're not gonna be giving them the money for the
All right, page 17.
What was the water cooler for the, uh, the account on aging? We did that as a zero because you would just do it as your gift account, right?
Right.
Or if you, yeah, you could do that, or see what the free cash looks like.
The West Fox Memorial Water Cooler to go along with the West Fox Memorial TV.
Let's not make it a memorial one, just.
Oh, we're gonna make it a memorial. Oh, yeah.
Now I am feeling a little hot.
I'm sitting on the beach doing this.
I know, boy, do I love that backdrop.
It is nice. It really is nice, yeah.
In fact, Joe was the last person to be at a beach like that.
Yeah. Yes, I was.
All right, we're going to page 18. Now, did
Hey, Carl.
Yeah.
I noticed, I just caught it under library, but, um, do we have any opportunity right now to hedge fuel?
We actually are. It's gonna be on your, um, uh, so the diesel and gas bid is, is open right now. And they're gonna be, within the next week or two, and we're looking at a um, a three, we're trying to do a three-year deal if we can.
That'd be great. And it directly affects the budget, because there's fuel in several places and um, I mean, never say never, but, you know.
Especially under the gas and oil budget, Doug, so.
That's what I mean, but they had fuel under, under library, which caught my eye, and I'm sure it's gonna be somewhere else in here, too. It's gonna be, that could be a huge help to everybody.
That's natural gas, so that's not out to bid now.
But that's gonna feel the price pressure, too, going down, so whatever we can hedge, we should look at that.
Right, but we're locked right now with a deal there, so until Paul Schroeder from the Collaborative comes back to me.
Right.
We're not able to go out to bid for that, but right now, we are out for gasoline and diesel.
Your timing could not have been better, in my opinion.
Right. So you're going to be authorizing at the next meeting, um, Russ and I to be signing off and awarding the bid for that kind of stuff, okay?
Very well.
When we're looking at the library salaries, the, uh, switching, uh, Margot's position to a full-time position. Where we've put off on any hiring on them. Is that incorporated into this request already?
Yes, it's under the part-time salaries that you see under fiscal year 20, that says 148. Then it goes up to 167 because it includes that and their, um, rate increases in their third year of the contract they're under.
Okay.
And if I, if I'm incorrect, by all means, the accounting department is free to correct me.
Right.
Now, we incorporated that expanded position.
Okay.
I, I, I think one of the things we need to think about is if you look at their library maintenance account. It, it, it was okay in 18, uh, 19, it ran high, 21 is through the roof. And if we were gonna do anything for re-allocating their money, they went up about three grand. National materials, we might be better off served to put that money up top into the library maintenance.
I would agree. And is that bound to any formula from the state for regarding library aid, or is it total library operations?
It's the operations, it's not a specific.
Fantastic.
Well, plus, it already went up on the salary one, anyway.
Just making sure, if we move something out of, if there's a specific line item that has to be information material as a portion of the budget.
Usually, the, usually the accountant deals with them on this, so if you, Laura can, can deal with them, but I think you could take that, um, difference between the 86, 80, which is what, 30? What, $3,180? And then reduce the other one by 3,180, because again, there's monies we're not putting into the building. But it's over 20 years old, just like all these other buildings, and that's why you see some of the operational costs go up. More stuff is breaking. And Bob Johnson is coming up and doing purchase orders all the time with accounting to get, uh, things fixed.
I wonder if it helps to close the library for three months.
I would think so, I would think.
In some respects.
Well, certainly cutting down the wear and tear on the carpet that we just replaced.
And same with the schools, right? I mean, three months of being closed. That, that, there's gotta be saving somewhere, not that we see it, but you're absolutely right, overtime, the, no more basketball games at night, there's all kinds of little stuff that's gotta add up.
Hell, just the fuel for the buses.
There you go. Yeah.
All right, so we'll, you're okay with making that adjustment within the library operational um, issue to address those other expenses, and then Laura can just check with, um, their criteria on the waivers, because I, I know that's come up before, that Carol and Linda had to deal with those questions. Cal, do you remember that? Just raise your hand, you don't even have to unmute yourself.
What was that again?
Yeah.
Oh, she wasn't even listening. In the past, when you
And I think we're good. You don't have
You had to talk about waivers and minimum expenses for library operations so that we didn't trigger an issue where we had to get a waiver.
Right, yes.
Right.
I'm muted. I'm muted, so that you shouldn't be.
All right, it's, I'm not sure who's causing it, maybe it's Laura and Carol. Not Melinda and Carol.
I'll be quiet.
Or maybe it's just Carol.
Okay, Russ, was that all you wanted for 18?
Yeah.
So what are we moving it up to? Sorry.
What, the, uh, the
You want 3,000?
Yeah, yeah, isn't it 3180? Right? So you just, you reduce 3180 from info material and then add it to the library maintenance.
Okay.
You'd add that on to the 11.
Okay, you were basically level funding the office.
Yeah, we just moved it, see, all I did was just move it from
I, I got it.
All right, page 19.
Wally Park water bill. I know I bitch every year, but that's why we put all the pumps in there, but it looks like it's now this year's gonna be different anyways, right?
Yeah, I mean, look, it was 2,300 last year, so.
I know.
And
And it goes back in the general fund anyways.
Yeah, and they're just going up there to get ready to mow, and that was a, by the way, that, that original um, investment you guys made for 40 or 50,000 to put in the wells, that was a great decision, and we got, when it's been paying us. Get back, because remember that first year bills, and there was all sorts of overages and everything?
Carl, that's why we're elected to do what we do.
Right.
But yes, there, there was a great idea.
Anything else on 19? I don't see anything else on 19.
New 20.
Again, we already spoke to the issue about channel 15 on both the operations and broadcast infrastructure capital for Town Hall.
Yep.
Okay.
And I think we can do this one more year on the capital. I, I had Laura double-check the, uh, the revenues, and we're okay channel 15 revenues.
All right, 21. 22.
Um, well, let's see, just making sure, I just wanna make sure you understand under 20 and 21, where we're having to make sure that we're, um, last year, we got the vote for the 300,000 for the roof and masonry design for the fire station. And so this year, um, we're gonna start paying that off and doing a paydown on that 300,000, which is including your design as well as your construction oversight. So the only thing that may be changing on this, uh, excuse me, principal and interest will be your decision on the fire station, um, project, which your designer came in at 929,000 for the approved apparent low bidder from Manchester, Connecticut, and then, of course, that's before we add in our clerk of the works and our contingency to that, so, um, you just need to understand that the policy decisions that you're gonna be making with the finance committee on funding this and awarding this that would go to town meeting, if you do it, because you just paid 10,000 to put out the bid to get the bids to do it.
Yeah.
Um, those would end up going to these two budgets on the bottom of 20 and top of 21, so is everybody clear on that?
Correct.
And Laura is carrying the name of the line item, but she does not have values in there because we have not made that decision. But we easily know that if we do this project, you could do it as a 20-year note, and, you know, you'll, you'll spread those costs over 20 years, so it's not gonna be big dollars, but it's gotta get done.
All right. Noted. 22.
What is the
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
The pump station, $64,000. That's under operations, that's what it costs.
Right, isn't that accounting, right? Isn't that for electricity?
Yes.
Yeah, that's for all your wells and your pump stations.
So that's not carried under the enterprise fund? That's carried on the tax rate?
No, this is, this is, you're, you're on the water division budget right now.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. You're right. Oh, there it is. Gotcha. Never mind. I hate when meetings go to two hours. I start to lose concentration. Gotcha.
All right.
And, and again, under the capital on the top of page three, Randy is double-checking his revenue sources with Laura. And if it can happen, then this would be a bond, and this would be obviously not 575, it would be a principal and interest, uh, in, in another part of the other line items below. Uh, this, this is only sitting there as a paid-in capital cost until there's a decision to either do it or to bond it and set it up under, and a or to bond it and set it up under an amortization schedule.
What was that word again?
Thank you for that, Carl.
All right, page twenty-three. That finishes up water. Page twenty-four.
And we already made the, we already had some discussions with accounting to make those, that fifty-five thousand for the skater and the thing go down to, what, forty thousand, I believe, so.
Okay.
So that'll be worked out with, uh, with Randy, and then uh, I believe you were gonna keep the infiltration and inflow as a yes. And we're holding off, US sewer commissioners are holding off on the pump station.
Correct. All right. Going to page twenty-five. EMS.
Uh, twenty-eight thousand at the bottom for that equipment, because uh, Mel and Laura, did the, did the fire chief come in yet and pull the POs for that, uh, that other equipment? He, he was gonna be doing it out of some of his general fund money in, uh, I believe the, a fire gift account. And then the fire association was also helping him to pay fire. Has he come in yet and pulled those POs?
Not, not that I recall.
It would have just been in the last day or two.
No.
Okay.
All right.
And Doug and the board members, you'll, you'll note that under the um, salary reserve, it's carrying a higher number because that is predicated on your discussion that you're doing with the fire chief and do pray for a, um,
Yep.
successor collective bargaining agreement with steps and incentives to make sure that we don't lose any more EMTs. Is everybody clear on that?
Correct.
Doug, you clear on that?
Clear as day.
As they, as they say, how many times can we be poached?
You lost me at amortization schedule.
I think that's the way my cat pronounces it. So that's, I mean, Laura, is that all you need from us from now until we have our joint meeting with the, um, the FinCom later on about this issue?
Yep.
So, and this is gonna help you. So, uh, it looks like, uh, everybody's done a, a good thing. Now, do we need to take a vote, or should we just vote on that when we have?
You can't vote. This is a work session. We can't vote, right?
Right.
I, I was gonna suggest we just take a roll call vote on people who participated from the board, select board in this discussion.
Before we do that, I still wanna, do we? Well, we can do that, but can we have this recast and emailed out so we can take a look at the budget vis-a-vis last year now, and then especially with the, um, so we can come back and take a look at uh, some of these things, maybe especially around the, uh, the police side and also on the, um,
DPW.
Roadwork, yeah.
Well, yeah, sure you can. She would, she would just take them out. You, you can't, you wouldn't keep three million in a model, anyway.
No.
Debt service in there. So if you were gonna, if you decided you were interested in doing one of those, uh, at, at least for the, um, the DPW, you'd be figuring out what dollar amount you wanted. A million. So if you were gonna do that, then you would just figure out what would be the debt service for a million, and I would go and speak to the financial advisor and have him run one of those debt schedules. Million. And it would be probably eight, nine, or ten years, and then you'd choose what term or length of it that would be, and then that's what that number would look like under the principal and interest schedule. Just like Laura's already carrying the one that you just did for two million last year.
What is the, what is the debt, what is the debt on the two million over twenty years?
Oh, no, you don't do it for twenty. No, we did it for ten.
All right, what are we carrying on that, that two million?
Right now? Okay, let me look. See.
I gotta get a headset. That looks really cool.
I don't know, where's twenty?
It does save your shoulder if you're talking on the phone all day. You know?
Okay, uh, the amount. And don't forget, we got a bond premium for this, so we did get some discounts, but the roadwork principal payment for twenty-one is a hundred seventy-five thousand. And the interest for that is seventy-nine, so eighty thousand. So it's, you know, it's eighty plus a hundred and seventy-five. That's, it's like.
Two hundred and fifty-five.
Two fifty-five, yeah.
Yeah.
Fifty-five.
So if you, so if it was some number less than that, you gotta figure it's two hundred grand. But if you did a million or a million and a half, ballpark, ballpark, ballpark. All right, so that's the number.
Yep.
Joe, you got that?
But don't forget, don't forget, you're also stepping in a potential one to one point two million for your fire station.
Right. We'd have to plug that in. I mean, we know, and so there's another two hundred thousand. Are you doing that over twenty? So it'll be somewhat less than that.
Well, that'd be less, because say, say it was a million, that'd be what, twenty payment thousand? And then twenty interest pay. So that would, that would be eighty to a hundred and ten thousand, probably. And I can have that run if someone, if, if someone here is interested in having me have go run a schedule for twenty years, or a million, a million, one, and a million for that.
Run, Carl, run, run, Carl, run.
Do one and one point five, please.
Yeah.
On a ten-year note.
Well, wait, but, well, I'm still on the twenty years for the, I'm still writing down the twenty years for the, uh, the building. Okay, now we're getting to roads. Okay, roads would be a ten-year note. And you want a one and a one point five million, right?
That's my thought.
Okay.
Russ, what are you thinking? You're off the quiet over there.
I, I, I have no problems with running the number.
Right.
I think that we have to look at what's going on. Um, I, my thoughts are, when, by the time we meet with the finance committee, we might be asking every single department to take cuts.
Understood, but there are some roads that we just gotta look at.
Absolutely, but I don't even know if Randy's gonna be able to get to the roads that we have now.
I agree, I agree.
You know, and I, I am serious. I, I, I certainly think the feds are gonna do something with infrastructure.
So is your concern?
It's gonna end up, I think, to, what I see is in, when that, you're gonna see they'll be working on major projects that have visual impact around big cities. That's how it always works with those projects that'll never end up in Southwick unless it was a big bridge or something like that, like we needed to replace.
Well, the way, the way, the way I was envisioning that, Doug, would be is they would um, use the chapter ninety formula they do. And they could bring dollars into the state of Massachusetts and use the chapter ninety formula to distribute it to communities because that's the fastest and fastest.
Never happened. It, it, it won't happen. And they also, they also, keep in mind, the feds just spent, what? Two trillion dollars that we don't have on, on, uh, aid around COVID-nineteen for di- different programs so far, so it'll be interesting to see what they, what the impetus is to, for the appetite to move forward with big, big dollar, big-ticket items. But I get it. I still think we should look at it, and, and if we can afford to program it, Russ, you're right. I don't think we understand yet what the impact of this COVID is going to be on the.
These are crumbs.
Croutons.
Crumbs. That's what we're getting right here.
Crouton, I don't know, but I think.
Crumbs, 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 crumbs.
You know, and just to be clear, I mean, I, I've heard numbers bounced around, and, and I don't want them to get misconstrued. You know, the, the state is forecasting a fourteen percent decrease in revenue at the top line for them, you know, for the state next year. That doesn't necessarily translate into fourteen percent of state aid. Frankly, we don't get a ton of state direct aid. You know, we get chapter ninety money, we get lottery money, we get, you know, school money, but it's, you know, we're not getting direct dollars you know, the way some of the larger cities in our area get. So it's interesting to see, but you know, it, it also, you know, people are gonna be impact, you know, there's definitely people impacted by this. Um, and it, and it's gonna have bearing on receipts to the town. So, Russ, I totally get it. And we may be very well looking to go to people for cuts in in this upcoming budget. But I think, you know, one of the things is, the other advantage is when, if there is money available to do some of this roadwork is, nobody's using them right now, so we can get the work done faster. Um, because there's less people out and about on them, too. But I, I still think, you know, we were looking at that last year and, and the roads, the, the deficit in the road maintenance and road construction against what we need to do was so vast, we were still digging ourselves a hole. And even the, the, the money we put at it last year didn't really, it took, it took a good chunk of it, but there was still a bunch of other projects in the, in the high priority column that didn't even get looked at.
Yeah.
Or we pushed off, knowing that we didn't have enough money, and now we're gonna take it down, so we'll see how this shakes out.
Well, we know from the beta study, when they made that presentation, now I think it's about four years ago, that we needed to spend six hundred thousand dollars a year just to maintain our roads.
Right.
You know, so.
Right, but that was, that was just roads, Russ. That wasn't even the culverts.
Right, that's just roads, just to maintain.
Design on culverts.
Right.
So that's why we, you know, and then we had to go and fix some other issues, and and the Congo Monroes, uh, is gonna put us behind, and.
Correct.
So.
Worst contractor in the history of the state of Massachusetts, right?
Not according to the Mass DOT.
Well, then, Mass DOT is the worst DOT in the, in the, in the country.
All right, I need a roll call of the select people who participated in this work session. Russ Fox, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Doug Mowgli, aye.